Meeting of Tuesday, January the 24th, 2023 to order at 6:09 PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus God, we come before you again. God, we say thank you, God, for another day, God, that you have allowed us to be here. God, as we come, oh God, to discuss and handle business of this city. God, I pray, God, that you would give us guidance, wisdom, and understanding. God, for you said in all things, oh God, to get understanding. So, God, I ask you, oh God, look upon us, oh God, and lead and direct our path tonight. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the club for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Perez.
Yeah.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney. Acting City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you to our Commissioners. Thank our staff. Thank our PBSO. And most importantly, thank our residents for being here this afternoon to participate and witness our regular Commission Meeting of Tuesday, January the 24th. Before moving in, just a quick housekeeping. I know many of you all realize that over the last year, particularly the last couple of weeks, we've been having a lot of disruption in our meetings. We're not gonna tolerate that any longer. We're gonna work with you. We want you to be here. We glad and happy that you are here. But to speak back and forth during the Commission speaking is out of order. And we're gonna give you one warning. This is the first warning to ask you to please not to talk and to interrupt this Commission meeting. We all have an opportunity to make comments during Commission meeting. Have three minutes to do that. I know a lot of you all want to have the Commission answer questions. Again, reiterate, it's known anything stopping anyone from asking or having us answer questions. But normally and particularly, we don't do that. We try to get through the agenda. That's the purpose of the meeting is to get through our agenda. Now, there is a particular question that may not take a lot of time. We may decide, or someone may decide that they would like to address that and answer that. And they have that right to do so. We're gonna try to give you some different opportunity to speak and ask questions of this Commission on several occasions. One would be during Town Hall meeting. And you can call any of us at any time. You know, you can reach out to your Commissioners. You can reach out to your City Manager and try to get some answers. I know a lot of you all are here maybe for the topic of the transitional housing that you heard about. That is not gonna go into effect. There was a lot of rumors saying that this Commission had approved of a transitional housing. If it's not properly zoned, it's gonna have to go, or would have, have to, went before the ZAP Board. But they was aware of the conversation that were being had in this community. The majority of the community that I know of was against that. So, this Commission gonna only do things that would be in the best interest of our city and our residents. So, you can kind of put that to rest, that it won't happen. Even the owner who was thinking about doing it have decided that he won't move forward in that. So, just to share that with your friend. The first item on our agenda would be the additions of any add-ons or any deletions of agenda items. City Manager, this time, do we have any add-on to this agenda or any deletion that you recommend?
Yes, sir. Deletion, that would be under public presentation comments. The Brewer Group, which had the proposed transitional housing, has canceled.
Jack.
And that was...
Both of those.
That was the... He just asked deletion. I'll just give deletion. But is she?
She canceled.
Well, she canceled. So, Mayor, there's... So, both the presenters canceled on us. The Palm Beach County Victim Services and then the Brewer Group.
Okay. And the Domestic Violent Coalition, did we schedule them to do a presentation here at this particular meeting?
That's Victim Services.
Victim Services.
They canceled. She's gonna reach out at a later date.
Okay. City Commission, having heard the no addition to the agenda with only the cancellation of the Brewer Group from the agenda, what is your pledge?
If I move that, we would accept the agenda as read with the cancellations of Palm Beach County Victim Services and the Brewer...
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and promptly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the acceptance of the agenda as presented with the cancellation of the two presentations that was previously listed. Call for questions. Here and now.
I have a question on this Brewer Group. I know that there's people that are still staying there. So, what's gonna happen with the residents that are there now? And who was supervising? And how were they operating without license?
It wasn't any residents there. He was doing minor repairs and...
I'm sorry, Keith, but there was residents there.
We have a stop order on any work being done there. So, no one should, at this time, to my knowledge, be there. But that'll be addressed under the City Manager report.
But it is time for questions and answers.
Yeah, this is in reference to the agenda, the acceptance of the agenda as presented.
I'll ask whoever wants to speak on it.
Okay. Any additional questions? Here and now, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now, we'll move to public comments. Public service announcement, presentation, proclamation. This section of the agenda allows for the community to speak. Each speaker is given a total of three minutes to comment. A public service call should be completed and returned to the City Clerk. When you are called to speak, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. City Clerk, at this time, if any comments call is completed.
Yes, the first person is Sharon Robinson.
I was gonna speak on upper half. Did I do that? She back there telling me.
She's...
No, I'm not chair.
Okay.
I'm chair.
Rob Love, y'all know who I'm here.
Yeah.
And speaking on Sheriff's behalf, I'm looking at this agenda. And like I tell y'all, these agendas are set up because of the way love and company be on live. They look at our lives and then they set their agenda up for this. What's going on right now? Oh, nobody can't talk. Nobody can't do this here. Only person they waiting to put out tonight is me. Because I'm a voice for this community. That's what the problem is now. And then, like I say, this here, they don't have anything about the offer money. Oh, we don't smash the Jack Brewer thing. But what about the offer money that people should have bring down got last year? I told them a month ago, when they had a Town Hall meeting, that they wasn't, people wasn't gonna get no money, quote. Like, I talked to Mr. Wilson today again. And he was saying, the people inside, they got $5,000. Their homeowner fix up their house in no dream. And then, he was saying, there are homeowners in Beverly that got $10,000. There are homeowners, there are people in Beverly that got $500. But the other thing is, here it is. When y'all gonna get something? It ain't even on the agenda this time again. It's not even on the agenda, so they can't talk about it. They ain't gonna talk about it. They sit up here and say, well, y'all don't say this and y'all don't say that. And then, we don't have to ask, answer no questions. When are y'all gonna answer some questions about $3,316,200 that they just sitting on and they telling nobody what they gonna do with it? It's a quiet discussion. If you ask anybody up there now, besides probably Sarah and Gonzalez, you ain't gonna get no answer from nobody up there. And they know it. And their problem is, oh, Rob Love stopping business from coming to town. Rob Love ain't number one man. One man. And if one man can stop business from coming to town, here's something wrong with this town. If one man can stop it and then you got peoples up there that can't bring it. I can bring some business, like I can stop some business. I was behind them same people right there, Bear, Marvin, and Bolden, holding a sign, vote for them. Now, I'm up here telling them, I can't do nothing about when I hold a sign. But I can do something now about changing it again. We changed it with y'all, now we gonna change it without y'all. 'Cause y'all ain't with us. Y'all sit up here and tell that lie to my, oh, God, with us. Y'all ain't with these people 'cause that's the world you're in. Ask them on here about the offer money. It was a month ago. It was a month ago. And y'all gonna sit up here with that same man to run everybody out of here. When he leave, y'all gonna be still here with egg on your face. Just like y'all gonna sit here, we ain't know nothing about that. Reentry place. We all know about it. Oh, they didn't know. Well, what city y'all running? If y'all running Palm Beach or Pahokee, 'cause I know. And then, I talked about it Tuesday. I'm up there next. I got three minutes next. I'm on there. Give me, Rob Love.
Thank you. When she call you, Mr. Love, then you can come up.
No problem.
Answer your question. The offer...
Wait, try to get by.
The offer funded is here. It's the first item on the agenda on the resolution. We'll be addressing the offer and the funding of it.
The next person is James Scott.
James Scott, 34th floor, Eroda Drive, Paul. I just wonder where we gonna start receiving financial reports? Because I know two or three months ago, Mayor Bab asked the City Manager to start paying quarterly or whatever. But we haven't seen one, not yet. And since you gonna address the offer money, I'm gonna say nothing about that. But that's the question I have.
Okay. Answer that. Hopefully, those reports should be coming on a monthly basis. Indeed, I asked to have quarterly written financial reports where it is reviewed and discussed among the Commission. So, Mr. Lucas hopefully would include that in his brief comments during his report to confirm that. But you're right.
Next person, Carlisle Nelson.
Good evening. Carlisle Nelson, 132 Cypress Avenue, directly behind this building, on the street, directly across from where the Brewer, whatever they got going on. The only thing I would say to this is that it's one thing to live on a street and to live in a community. It's funny that you all let this pass by. This pass by. A whole community, even when Mr. Sam sold the property. I lived there on the street, less than 500 feet away. And you all sit here, and I don't know who, what, when, or how. But it's wrong for you or whatever kind of facility for what I hear is coming up. That's safety issues to me. 'Cause I just passed that street coming home from work. And when I got there, I noticed four, five young ladies sitting right in the front of the building. I have noticed a guy that's drunk sitting right there at the doorstep. So, you all, you all could tell me that you all don't know what's going on. We in Pahokee, this is a small town. And everybody know, everybody and everybody know everything that go on in this little town. But it's funny that that can pass through. But we got other issues going on in the community that nobody else can never address. We don't have no restaurants. We don't have nothing else sitting, sitting here. But yet, we'll sweep this up on the road. Now, I'm funny when you're right. But I have a question. If it was sitting beside your door or sitting right next to you, what would you do? What questions would you ask? I stay right here. And that gonna push the property values down. Ain't number two families really live on that street directly? That's me and the family here. And they bringing in a whole bunch of criminals, outlaws. Kids walk up and down that road to school every morning. IT schools, so ain't what nobody don't tell me is what I know. So, you all could sit here and play it like you don't know. But search your own heart and the crevices of your own heart and see what's actually going on. This community is failing. And you all who run the city, not me. If y'all can let that go through and don't nobody know. A whole business, a whole corporation, that's revenue. Not for me, but for you. So, you ask yourself the question, what are you all doing? Y'all saying they swept up on the road. How long gonna sweep? But yet, people are there. They have boarded up their whole building. I'm watching it every day. I've been noticing different things going on right there on my street. And I'm down with so much, y'all. If it was beside you, what would you do? What would be your next step?
I'm gonna briefly answer that again. There would be no transitional housing there. There would be no prison there. The owner have already agreed to either rent that out to a single-family home as a single-family home or sell the property. But there is no way a transitional housing is gonna go there. And if it did went through the zoning board, I can assure you that this Commission, I can't speak for everyone, but I know the majority wouldn't have approved it anyway. So, that's the best we can say and best I can do as far as answering that. There would not be a transitional housing. It's not gonna be on your street. It's not gonna be in Pahokee.
Next person. Next person is Anita Flores.
Hello, my name's Anita Flores. I live at 342 Banyan Avenue. And I'm, I don't know, I don't really do politics, but I am very concerned about that building. There is people living there. They're walking down, up and down the street drunk. I'm worried about my daughter who has a disability, and she constantly walks from my house to my mom's house. We, the Florists, practically have houses on that whole street. All my brothers are all here. We have cousins. We have uncles. We have God sisters. And the teacher is practically the only one that's there that's not family. But we still consider him as family because we're always back and forth. They can say whatever they wanna say, but there's stuff going on there. There's children constantly walking back and forth. They're standing right there. It's just a hazardous all the way around. Like, there's something going there, and I'm very concerned. And I wish that you guys would really look into that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, could you assure this community and these residents that we will, in the morning, first thing in the morning, make sure we inspect that premise and make sure that no one currently is being living there? If we can do that.
Yes, and also, I will give Mr. Brewer a call when I leave here tonight to address, does he have someone staying in this property? Also, excuse me. So, timeline of the violation, just to give some insight to the public. So, on Friday the 13th, we got reports from the community. Great folks called us in. My staff came to me. We had a pow-wow. They reached out to Gemma regarding what should be the next steps legally to dispose of this situation. So, we put a stop work order on the house. And there was a date, a magistrate, a special magistrate date set for February 8th. And it'll be right here at 2 o'clock. So, you guys are welcome to come to that as well to speak your opinion when the special magistrate is here. We received a letter Monday from Angie, who's the spokesperson for the Brewer Group, in which she says, "We thank you for letting us know you won't be attending the City Commission meeting tomorrow evening. Staff will be in contact with you regarding..." Well, that's my comment here. But hers is, "I hope this email finds you well. After considerable discussion and prayer, we have decided not to pursue a transitional home license in Pahokee. We are considering selling or renting the property. However, we would love to work with the team to host community events. I was impressed with your hometown pride. We look forward to seeing you soon, just not at the meeting on Tuesday. Please let us know how we can help Pahokee and its community members. Thank you so much again for meeting with us, and I sincerely hope to see you soon." So, what happened is, on the 13th, when they came in, Gemma reached out to the Brewer Group. She got in contact with them. We scheduled a meeting with them on January 19th at 11:00 AM in my office. That meeting lasts for an hour and a half. And that's when we told them our position. And I guess they were gonna do a PowerPoint presentation tonight. And that's when they had a change of plan. We also told them that our statute wouldn't allow... We also told them that our statute wouldn't allow no more than four people, uh, if we were to, um, move forward with a ZAP. And they were trying to have at least twelve people. So I will ask him this evening regarding that and just know that there'd be a special magistrate meeting on that property as well. As Mayor had, uh, had said, I will be there in the morning to peruse the place and see what's going on and what else we can further do.
I have a question for the city manager. How, how is it that this, you know, this is, this is, uh, supposed to be like a transition from prison to community? And it's going in front of the ZAP board, but yet the community, the, the neighborhood, they don't, you know, they don't have a say-so. They're not, they're not notified. And in the first place, I'm sure they're not, they didn't go ahead with the purchase without first looking to see if this was even possible. So my question is, did they speak to anyone at City Hall? Did they have any, was there any conversations, any negotiations, anything going on that led them to believe that they could go ahead and, and clean and, and start housing people without even having permits or, or anything like that?
So it seems to be a pattern with the Brewer Group. So they had just purchased, maybe months, uh, ago, a property in Palm Beach County. And they just rent to own from under the person. The person had a transitional housing and they took over it. So they had the same violations of not having a license and things like that. He said, and his spokesperson said that they were approached by, uh, a realtor and saying they had property to sell. They never came to the city or asked that. Uh, staff drilled him and, and, uh, Ms. Gemma, the attorney, drilled him on, "What makes you think that you can just come in a place and not have any license and all those things?" He says, "Because the county at the property he has up in Palm Beach County said that he was licensed through the, the previous company that he, he purchased." So he thought because we're in the county, that the city wasn't a separate entity for them to deal with.
Well, I mean, I checked, I checked. The property was bought on the Brewer Group Inc., which I looked it up and, you know, they're, they're inactive. Now, there's a D Brewer Group Inc. that's active, and that was reinstated in twenty-twenty. And that's a plantation. And that's under, under Jack Brewer. So that's D Brewer Group Inc. Now Brewer Group Inc., you know, that's got a Fort Lauderdale address. That's the one that's inactive. Then I Googled it and it says the site is currently unavailable. So I couldn't even see where the heck they were located at. So, so, you know, uh, my thing is, you know, I, I don't understand how they could just, you know, show up in our city, take residence, and if, if the citizens would not have noticed, they would've, you know, conducted business. And, and, and they're in a neighborhood where there's family, there's kids, you know? That, that is ridiculous, ridiculous. So, you know, we're gonna have to do a better job. When people come here and, and they automatically, you know, tell you, "Oh, we are a nonprofit, we're doing this and we did that and we did that." We need to do diligence and we need to check them out thoroughly, check them out. Cause we happen to be a hub for all the delinquents.
Mayor Baugh, can I? Um, Mayor Baugh, I don't know what we're not hearing tonight. Um, they clearly says that the group backed out of, of this going forward with what they're doing. Number two, you heard also that they never came to the city to acquire anything. Um, number three is, you talk about permit, there are people that does, you talk about how it can be done. There's residents that's doing stuff on weekends without permits. So it's not that stuff can't be done and, and it's not coming to, to city. So if I could please finish my comments. So what I'm saying about the group is, they're saying it's not, it's not happening. So I don't know why we keep beating the dead horse, it's not happening. The guy is clearly states from, he listened to the statement that they're, they're, he's either gonna rent the property or sell the property. But Mayor, not to take long, but just, just to get, put this out here, that we talk about convicted, I'm not for or against, but the thing about it is, we have a, a small community here. It didn't come just say, "Oh, well, how did it happen? The city did," like the rumor going out, Bad Mervin and Bolden is the one, uh, okay, the facility to come to Pohokee. No, as soon as Mervin heard of it, the first person I called was the code enforcer. And then she went right out there and did what she was supposed to do. Secondly, we, we talk about this group, this thing here, did we not know? We also have a reentry program already in Pohokee, not even one point two miles from a residence house. We have a drug rehab form, not even five hundred, six hundred feet from the house. We have, uh, sexual predator form, not more than one point, one, about two miles from a re, not even miles, pretty much from a first residence house. I'm not saying, so I'm not saying that that should be at that facility. I'm not saying that. So don't go out saying I'm saying that. I am not saying that should be there. But what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to say is, we're, we listening to that it's not gonna be there. I agree that is not, it should not be there. I'm for it not being there. But we don't have to beat the dead horse. They said it's not gonna come there. But moving along, it is, oh, zone as single-family housing. You can't stop people from living in the housing. Right now, we have residents, and forgive me, they have family members come home from prison, live in our household, that's living next door to somebody. And they are, they are felonies. So we have, we, well, well, to say that, then we have, we have sex, we have felonies, uh, convicted felonies in our audience right now. They're walking around, walk around kids every day. We have felonies that work for the cities. We have felonies that sits on our commission. We have felonies that sits there. I'm not saying that, that, but we have to have, we have have some compassion. I'm not saying to place the facility there. I'm glad that they're moving it, putting it somewhere else. That's a good thing. But let's move on. They just said it's not gonna be there. But you cannot stop people from living in a residence. You can't stop nobody from living in their residence.
I want to rebuttal to that.
If you had a son to come home from prison, he's not gonna live in your house.
I want to rebuttal to that. Because, because there's one thing, there's one thing. Why don't you allow me to rebuttal that?
He is citizen comments right now.
And I want to rebuttal to the other commissioners' comments. There's one thing, there's one thing, okay, there's one thing when we have a, a member in our family that is with us. It's another thing when you have ten, fifteen, twenty, they were gonna house sixty, that you don't know anything about and evidently they were on several.
But they just said they stopped doing it.
Second of all, second of all, you know what? We have the, 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 the perks over there, the, the, the ones that, that are.
Pelican Lake.
That, yeah, Pelican Lake? Because this commission, huh? This commission did not address the county. They not addressed the county. When you find out that something like that is coming, you need to fight it because this is our community.
Why you fight it?
Even if it's not my house.
Commissioner Perez.
I look out for the next generation because it's our responsibility to look out for them. That is why. I don't make excuses for anything that happened in this, in this city.
Commissioner Perez, can we move on in the agenda?
Yes, you can move on now.
City clerk, in addition comments.
Next person is, uh, Robert Love.
Yeah, anybody who's got some minutes, they don't want up here, I might need all of them. Y'all know, I can go two, three hours without anything. I don't need no agenda. Because like I said, when you come up here and address y'all, y'all always got an excuse. Well, we got this down the road, we got this down the road, and now it ain't coming, so now hush. Y'all got a problem with telling grown people to hush? And then like I still say, when y'all got here, I can name twenty things I done done in Pohokee and can't name nothing y'all done done. And then I'm gonna get to this tonight, Keith. You remember when Masalata came with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar check for that splash plan? Y'all know it was coming. And he said, "The only stipulation is y'all got to name the park, naming after Mr. Love." Do you remember that? You was on the commission. Do you remember when he said that? And what Robert Love jumped up and did? I don't need a name after me. I need a name after anybody but me. I don't need no recognition. I don't need nothing. I, know what I told y'all? I said, "Name it the people park." But y'all gonna come back and y'all name it the commissioners' park and the commissioners ain't did a damn thing to get that park up there. So that's why they get pissed off when I come in here, cause I know what to do about Pohokee. And I'm gonna be here every commission meet. And then when they have them sitting up there trying to tell us to hush and tell us about, "We don't need to say this and, and don't beat a dead horse." Know why? Cause they don't know how to wake a dead horse up. I wake a dead horse up. And that's what going on now. That's why people in this, uh, community are not waking up. Cause Tuesday, I start talking about that same place. Wednesday, I talked about the same place. Thursday, I talked about the same place. Friday morning, I talked about the same place on the live, four hours a day. And know when people woke up? They come and put a stop order on it, five thirty, five oh one, Friday evening. Know why they put a stop order on it? Cause we were waking up people. And nobody in here know it was coming. Anybody in here know it was coming? Yeah. People watching the live, what they telling them, "Don't watch it." Cause Robert Love be talking about the pastor. How many pastors sitting up in here tonight? You arguing about something in the community? How many pastors? Tell them Robert Love said it. I hope they watching YouTube. How many come up in here tonight? Tell them pastors Robert Love said it. Cause like I'm saying, I don't have no respect for a pastor, a preacher, a bishop. Cause when God said, he said, "Touching out, die anointed." He didn't say touching out no pastor, touching out no preacher, touching out no bishop. Don't make me go to preaching in here, cause that what they calling me, a preacher. But I tell people, I'm not a preacher, I'm a preacher. I reach people. I don't preach, cause preaching ain't nothing but the truth. If I stand up here and don't quote no scripture, they'll say, "That nigga show preacher." Excuse me. I'm gonna get it up to twenty-one now.
Next person is Bobby Colvin. You're next.
Bobby Colvin, thirty ninety-six Bacon Point Road. Uh, before I say what it's going to say, usually we come in the gate back here when we come into the meetings in the evening. And tonight, the gate was locked. I don't know if it was an oversight or a change, but there was all kind of stuff going up in, on at the, the gymnasium and it took a while to get in. So if whoever's in charge of opening that gate would, please keep it open, I'd, I'd appreciate it. I know you're going to be talking some about the America, uh, I'm having some vision problems, Rescue Plan Act. I don't know exactly what the best thing to do with any of the money, but I do know that there are people on the state level and the county level that are watching these meetings and are paying attention to how the money will be spent. And for me, I would like for the decisions to be made by this commission. I have nothing against the city manager or anybody else, but to me, the city manager or anybody else working for the city does not need to be making decisions about how the money is spent. And I personally, from an accountability standpoint, I would like to just say, for me, I would like the commission to make the decision.
We have two that were received after the cutoff. Do you want to accept them? The next person, Lolita Kimes.
Hello. Um, I reside at two ninety Park Drew Court. Um, the concern I have is with my property at four oh one North Coconut Road that's located in Eastlake Village. Um, back in twenty nineteen, um, Avon Johnson, I think he's the, over the little crew that cleans up the city. And I stay, my house is across the street from one of her residences out there also. And beside her residence, it's a big cane field. The cane field been there for, I, I asked him since twenty nineteen, asked him why they won't come and just cut the cane field down. He told me that the machine was torn up. Here it is, twenty twenty-three, and the machine still torn up. So when does someone gonna come out there and clean up that stuff? It, there's snakes crawling. It used to be a boardwalk right there once, um, y'all had some work start, to be done there. That was never finished. Um, the boardwalk was for the kids that stay in Eastlake Village. I feel like it's need to be there a, again because Eastlake Village kids have to catch the school bus well out there in McCluret Project. Mrs. Sarah Robinson, she drives one of the buses out there. Those kids have to walk all the way around, it's only one way in and one way out of Eastlake Village. These kids have to walk all the way around to McCluret Project to catch the school bus. When it was more convenient for them to walk right beside my house, across the canal, the boardwalk, it, it was a nice boardwalk, made of concrete. And we loved it there, cause it was another way out of there. We only had one way in and one way out, out there. So when they went across the boardwalk to the trailer park out there where Mr. Walker them stay, they went across another boardwalk into McCluret Project. And I really appreciate if you all put that boardwalk back there just for the kids' sake. And I wanna know when is those bushes gonna be torn down and when the equipment gonna be get fixed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
The last person is Antoinette Kelly.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Antoinette Kelly. I reside at eight hundred McClure Road Lot H here in Pohokee, Florida. Um, I have concerns. I'm not either into politics, but, um, I just see our community going down. And for me, I don't know if anyone else agrees with me, but when the sexual predators were put out in Pelican Lake, that gave other people opportunities to come in and take over our community. Cause anybody in their right mind would not have sexual predators five miles away from their residence, one point two miles away from their residence. I don't have kids, but I've helped raise kids in this community and I love my community. And I would like to see it grow. I feel like the board doesn't respect the community. That's why things are being passed up under you guys, because they see that you don't respect the community. So if I respect you guys, we're gonna bring a reentry center in here. They're not gonna know about it. So that's how I feel. I don't mean to disrespect anyone, but enough is enough. There's no respect for our city. People bickering and arguing. It's time to love. Everybody here knows each other. And I'm gonna be here every Tuesday, whenever you guys have your meetings. I took off work to be here because I would like to see a change. If you have people on the board that don't live in Pohokee, they're not gonna give a damn about Pohokee. Not a damn about Pohokee. They're not gonna care about our city because where they going? Port St. Lucie? Pitt, St. Petersburg? They gonna make their communities better and they're gonna tear our community down. And if they see you're gonna allow them to do that, they're gonna sit right next to you and ki, ki, ki and allow it to happen. So think about it.
I'll briefly say this. That sexual facility out there, um, at Pelican Lake is not within the city limit. It's like five miles out. We did advocate for that not being there. That's county, unincorporated area. It's nothing we can do. And I agree with, uh, Commissioner Perez. She felt maybe we didn't advocate for or against it, but we did. At least the peoples on this commission really did.
Um, just to say this, sometimes we have to fight harder. We can't just say, "Okay, let it be." We have to fight harder. Just like we fight to have the best things in life, we need to fight. I don't wanna just have, just in my community, I want a big, nice home on the corner. I want the whole town to have big, nice homes on the corner. I wanna fight for everybody in the community, cause at the end of the day, we all are family, no matter we're black, white, Mexican, Jamaican, Haitian, we're in this city together. Belgrade is rising and Pohokee is steadily going down. They tearing down everything. There's nothing here. My first time looking at a city committee mission, um, um, meeting, I was embarrassed to be from Pohokee. We can. We can never have our meetings and get along and agree to disagree sometime. Just listen to the residents of the community. That's all we ask. That's all we ask. Just listen to us. That's all we ask.
Thank you for your comments.
No additional.
Kate, as to end of our comments, we do thank the public for their input and their comments. We did have two items on the agenda that was remove the Palm Beach County Victim Service and the brewer group. Next, we're gonna entertain the consent agenda, the January 10th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. City Commission, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, unless there is some questions that need to be addressed and need to have this put back on the regular agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we would accept the consent agenda, January 10th, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the acceptance of the consent agenda item, which consists of the January 10th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Call for questions? Her and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Plur.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes.
Now we're moving to the next item, which is old business, discussion of existing activities or previously held events, if any. First item on this agenda is the update of city project city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Adams?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. First, the old house on Bacon Point Road. Work will resume on Wednesday, the 1st of February. They will complete demolishing, removing the rubble, as well as the surrounding trees in the area. So that will resume then. Barfield Highway, they're working on the curbing and the asphalt. The prices have increased for asphalt with a lot of construction. And so, no, there is not another work order. So we have turned that work order down, because FDOT has turned it down, as well as the city. That is part of their contract, that whatever cost will not be reflected on us. Eastlake Village. Eastlake Village, the work will resume in Eastlake. I just submitted reports for Eastlake Village to FDEP, and the work shall resume on the 30th of this week. And that is all for current updates. I'm just in the process of submitting pay apps and doing paperwork.
If you would, could you give us an update, if there are anything to be updated on the Barfield Highway?
So besides the curbing, and like I just mentioned, they're working on the curbing and asphalt. They're working towards Third Street up to Barack Obama right now. So a lot of the cleanup and piping. We have some things that are in the pipeline right now that they're trying to clear up and work through. So before it's ready to move forward.
Are there any updates on McClure Road?
Updates on McClure Road is we're talking with the engineer. We're working in design phase right now, and going back and forth with FDOT. So next commission meeting, I have, I'm sorry.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Eastlake. I looked at, I read the scope of work that came from FDEP. And it speaks about replacing the pipes. They're supposed to be replaced. The flow is supposed to be decreased. There's different verbiage in there that I did not see in the bid that went out that for the work that Ryobak is doing.
For the scope of work, which is in the original contract from FDOP, FDOP. That verbiage is included in there. And it is included in their breakdown when we, when they submit their scope of work. It may not say the exact same language, but when it is submitted to the engineer, he understands and he knows, because that is also submitted to FDOP, their engineer. So I will go back and look to, either we ask them to change the language so that it matches, but it is the same item. So whether it is flushing the pipes to make sure that the flow goes through correctly, because they have done that work before the process stopped last year. They cleaned and they flushed through going down Amarilla's, as well as in the east, in the McClure, that drain pipe through there. They did clean some of that. So when we start over again, I will go back and look at the language that they have used, what's in the scope of work, and compare it to what is in the bid, as well as what was submitted to FDOP, and make sure that we're all on one page.
Okay, I understand that, and I understand about the language being the same. But it's not about the language, it's about the work. And as far as I know, they have not replaced any pipes. And if you flush it, and it gets stuck again, and if they still are getting flooded, that means the problem has not been resolved. The, 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 the main, the main reason for that was so that there will be no flooding to the streets and the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. And so if, there were pipes that were pulled out. If you remember seeing pipes that were sitting on the side that were pulled out. But you also have to remember those, that line, those pipes run into the canals. So if the farmers have not done their due diligence to make sure that the water levels are lower, East Beach, it will back up and impact our side of it. So again, when we start this process, we will work hand in hand with East Beach Water District to make sure that they have done their part, and constant communication is happening with Ryobak, as well as East Beach.
And I have another question. I visited the canal. So you have, you have the canal that comes from where the farmers, behind the trailers, and where the farmers, and it comes, and then it, it, it just stops. So I don't know where the pipes are going. You got road, and then you get to the end, and then there's, there's water again. So are those pipes going through? Are, why is it so exposed as a canal? Why is it, some is covered? How, how does that work? Because I have, I have film from before they started, and I have film now. So I want to know what happened there.
So if I may, at next commission meeting, I will ask Ryobak and East Beach Water Control District to come speak, so that they can speak accurately to you. And yes, it is debris that is in there that is blocking. It was debris in there before, but I will ask at next commission meeting that we allow those contractors to come in, the engineer, and be able to speak accurately to that.
Okay, and then now for Barfield Highway. I remember when we first spoke, I asked about the work that the county was doing and the work that the city was doing. The city was supposed to be doing the reconstruction, and the county. I even looked at the videos by you. You said the county was doing all that had to do with the drains and the pipes and all that thing. Now I find out that the county had given the city over a million dollars to go along with the FDOT project. So my question is, why didn't the city bid out the two sources? If we had the money, why didn't we bid it out separately instead of combining it and giving it to one contractor?
Okay, so the ILA interlocal agreement that the city already had with the county, that was already in existence, that is referenced every time we do a, anything that has to do with Palm Beach County water. Palm Beach County Water is doing anything that is related to utilities. And that money comes from that million dollar, 1,46,000 dollars comes from the county. So anytime Rosso does work that has to do with water, and those are two separate entities that are built. When Rosso does water utility work, that money is billed, and it goes towards that funding from Palm Beach County. When anything that has to do with reconstruction goes towards FDOT.
Okay, I have, I have a letter that she sent to me. It was sent to me, and according, according to them. According to them. And they have a packet ready for me. I had to pick it up, because I want every payout that was done. Here's the public records. They're charging me $63 for me as the commissioner of the city to receive this information, which I understand, I'll pay for it. It says, "Good afternoon, Ms. Perez." This is what I send them. "Good afternoon, Ms. Cohen. Thank you for your information. Could you please," well, this is not the first one, this is the second one. "Could you please email me a copy of the agreement between the Palm Beach County Water Utility Department and the city of Pahokee in regards to Barfield Highway? Also, any payments made by your agency to the city, along with vouchers or work orders explaining the work performed for each payment? Also, did Palm Beach County Water Utility Department use their own engineer for set of plans? If so, please provide name of firm and any payments made to him, and copy of scope of work to be performed. Please, I would like this as soon as possible." She wrote me, "Good afternoon, Ms. Perez. The Barfield Highway Water and Sewer is being installed as part of the Barfield Highway contract, which is a Pahokee contract being administered by FDOT utilizing grant funds." So it's being administered by FDOT. But who is doing the work? Who gave the same contractor both work? It's two different things. You got water, and you got reconstruction. Why were they giving both things, both, both grants, or whatever you want to call it? Why weren't they giving both? Because obviously, it's taking a heck of a lot longer. And obviously, if you're doing road reconstruction, I don't think you're an expert on the water, on the water and sewer and all that other kind of stuff.
So Palm Beach County, when we started this process and we submitted our legislative request for Barfield Highway, FDOT was the entity, the department, that picked up this project. The, the design part was done by A&E, as you know. Palm Beach County had already had an ILA with the city of Pahokee. A&E was already designing the work for the road. Palm Beach County said, "Since you're already doing the work, we will work with you all." And that is where the first, the first ILA was for 46 million, 46,000 dollars. Palm Beach County came back once that bid was submitted and saw that, here's what's happening. So we will give you all an additional million dollars to have Rosso to do the work, since you already have a contractor on site. If we would have done the construction part of it, and Palm Beach County came along on the back end and said, "Oh, we need to lay down utilities now."
You didn't have to go on the back end. It could have been done right along with the site.
It's being done right along. Palm Beach County.
But two different, two different entities, not the same contractor.
Palm Beach County did, we did, okay. The former city manager at the time did not go back and ask, "Can we have two separate utility companies? Um, two separate contractors to work on this project?" It would have been a lot to have two separate contractors. So instead, there's one contractor who has experience with utilities, water utilities, as well as regular construction. They're working on, they've worked on Riviera Beach. They've done work in Lake Worth as well. Same type of projects. FD, FDOT did not have.
Can you tell me why a thousand linear feet of reconstruction and water lines, why it's taken two and three years to do by one contractor, who could have had two contractors working right along, moving right along? That road should have been done a long time ago.
I cannot answer that. Why, why it is taking so long? Because you also have to remember, there's things that happened up under that ground that no one was aware of. And if you're asking me, but the engineers come and they ask, you ask them the same questions. We're moving as diligently as possible. However, like I said, there's change orders that don't come before a commission, because they're asking for additional things that neither the city, or FDOT, or Palm Beach County is going to approve.
How do you guys know that there was gonna be 33 work orders? When you haven't even, we're on number 18, and you guys had already estimated it was gonna be 33. So if you're doing work that, that is unforeseeable. So I mean, how, how, how did that number come about?
Because when they're down there doing the work, and they produce, Rosso produces a request for a change order, that request goes to the CEI. We then submit it to FDOT and Palm Beach County. FDOT and Palm Beach County's engineers look at it and decide, "We're not approving this." Or yes, "We will give you the dollars for this." And then we move forward. So if we come to you with change order number 18, we're on change order 18, but there are requests that have never been submitted, because no one is approving them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the, thank you for the update. We're gonna move to our next agenda item.
You always want to move along, and you don't ever want to get to the bottom of it. It would seem that you, being the mayor, would be the first one that want to get to the bottom of it.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion and direction to hold a workshop to discuss the pros and cons of annexation, City Manager.
We're gonna have a discussion regarding pros and cons of annexation. Or I'm looking for discussion and direction on annexation, Mayor. Basically, I just wanted to welcome the citizens of Pahokee, and I do appreciate all that you guys do and come to us for. And for annexation.
Mr. Lucas. On the agenda says that you were gonna come to see about doing a, a town hall meeting or a work, uh, uh, meeting about it, not to discuss it tonight.
So what I'm asking for is direction, if we want to hold a workshop. So that, that's what I'm doing. I'm asking.
I thought you were gonna go into the pros and cons and all that right there.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, I wasn't. Now, on the annexation, I understand that there's a cost to annexation. So right there, in doing a workshop, we can look at what those costs would be. Some of the places you guys have mentioned that you want to annex in are like nonprofit entities that are public housing authority. So if we annex in these properties, there will be no property value coming in for us. And then the cost of the annexation versus. And then the cost of the annexation versus will we ever break even or make our money? We need to consider those types of things. And I would like to move forward with, um,
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, they are, they are nonprofit. Do we get any money from them? Because it's my understanding that the city gets money in lieu of taxes.
We do get money in lieu of, from the Pahokee Housing Authority, we do.
How much money do we get?
I seen one check for like eighteen thousand, I can't recall the second check that we get. But there's two checks that we do get.
How, how often do we get those checks?
Once a year.
Once a year, they pay eighteen thousand dollars in lieu of taxes?
Yeah, on, on one property and there's another check. I, I just don't know it right off the top of my head. But I can get that number so we, I can bring it back, so.
Also, we want to take in consideration too, with the annexation that we're proposing, it would basically double of Pahokee's size. So you receive some additional federal funding through the censors. And also when businesses, although they currently live in Pahokee, they have a Pahokee address, it's not counted as for our direct city population. So if you double that number, now when business look on the censors and see our population drove, they would then be more likely to consider, you know, doing business in Pahokee. So that's a plus there. It's not going to be a equal, uh, uh, trade-off where we're going to get as much money than we put in for this. But you know, the biggest part of it is too, is making sure these residents realize that they are part of this city. They have the voting rights and the voice that our other residents have. So it's a bigger picture just than the dollars, but certainly the dollars are important and we have to look at that. But I'm looking at other alternatives to kind of offset some of that cost in the workshop and exploring the possibility to annexation would probably address some of those issues.
And another, another thing that we have that are, that are, they don't, they don't pay ad valorem is the churches and the properties that they own. The lands, the vacant lands that they own that are vacant, nothing's happening with it. And they're not paying taxes either. So, I mean, the, this, this, these people, they, their kids go to, to, to our schools. They shop in our stores. They, they buy fuel in the gas station, they do everything here, but they have no voting rights. When it comes to the, to the, to the city.
So the bottom line is, I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, but my preference would be to go ahead and proceed with holding the, uh, the workshop to further discuss the pros and cons and try to move this issue forward to, to, to reality.
I agree, and I also would like to suggest that we could ask questions and get answers.
I will, um, get it together with the professional services and set the date.
Okay, thank you.
And at the time, if we could have numbers?
Numbers?
Yeah, if we're going to determine based on finances, I would like to know the real numbers so we could make an educated decision. Actual numbers.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinance. We don't have any public hearings or ordinance. The next item would be resolution. We have one resolution, it's Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-three, city attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the expenditure of ARPA funding in accordance with the approved budget attached hereto as Exhibit A, authorizing further actions for implementation by the city manager, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation of Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-three?
Yes, sir. So we wanted to break down the, the funding. If I may, mayor, I like to make extra copies of, of some additional things and then make sure that's provided to the public as well. Ms. Becky, are you, are jobs only coming up? I need eight and then.
I would like to also go on the record that, um, the breakdown, we just got it a little while ago at the beginning of the, of the meeting.
So once they get back, I want, I want to go over the ARPA allocation breakdown and what that means per resident and the allocation amount. Uh, I know there have been concerns about it and then also eligibility. So, um, I'll just go through this. So we're looking at six items in the program. That's minor home repairs for residents and then for our seniors, veterans and disabled. The goal is to provide with the four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-dollar allocation to touch thirty-six households and then under senior, veterans and disabled, seventeen households. Um, the allotment would be for residents, seven-thousand-five-hundred. And then for the seniors, veterans, disabled, you would be looking at ten thousand. The eligibility would go as such. Residents must complete and submit an application to the City of Pahokee through the Economic Development Department prior to cutoff period. Proof of legal residence for all living at the residence. Copy of driver's license or any legal form of photo I D showing City of Pahokee address, providing legal status in the United States on or prior to March first, twenty-twenty. Proof of address, copy of recent utility bills, gas, water, electric, et cetera. Proof of homeownership, mortgage statement, property tax receipt D. Proof of income for twenty, twenty and twenty-twenty-one or the last sixty days from all sources of income, unemployment, social security and so forth. For the first-time homebuyers program, we would look at for the three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars allocated to, uh, allot ten thousand dollars per resident, which would give us an opportunity to assist approximately thirty-three households. The eligibility would be similar to that of minor home repair, except for we're going to be looking at the median income from eighty percent median, well, basically from thirty percent median income all the way up to a hundred-and-forty percent median income. And then the proof of legal residence and so forth, form of I D and all those things. Residential utilities and rental assistance, we would look at a two-thousand-dollar allotment per resident and that allocation would be two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Are we looking at reaching one-hundred-and-thirteen residents through that program? Then there's the behavioral mental health assistance. We'd be looking at about five-hundred dollars per residence. Uh, the allotment there for the two-year period is sixty thousand and we're looking at a hundred-and-twenty, uh, residents that we could touch. Then there's the job workforce, education, training and development. The allotment is sixty thousand and it could be as increments of from one-thousand to ten thousand. If it's ten thousand block, then that would be six nonprofits that we could pass that through. And the last thing is small business development. We're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, and assisting a business owner at five-thousand dollars per business owner. That would reach at least fifty Pahokee businesses. And eligibility is, is right there and once they bring it, you guys can, uh.
What's the employee mitigation, what is that?
So the employee mitigation is. At this time, it's the commission deliberating, it's going back and forth from the community at this point, I'm sorry.
But I want you to know I ain't blind, saying like that, when I looked at that, I don't see the three-hundred thousand for the splash pad. I want to know how it got back up to three-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand.
You interrupted me, Mr. Love. You entertained a question that you completely ignored.
Well, in, in answering Commissioner Perez, remember, I guess in two thousand twenty-one, employees got, sixteen employees got one-thousand dollars. That's what the mitigation is for, for COVID.
So they already got it, so what are we going to do with that sixteen thousand dollars now?
Well, it comes off the number, so you, you know where it's at. It's accounting for all the money.
Yeah, I know, but you already gave it out. So now you're getting it, so what are you putting it now? Because it's already given out.
I, I think what it is, Commissioner Perez, it's not an additional amount that being given to the employee. He just account for what employees have already received. So it's for the record accounting of it, the, the three-point-one million that we received. It got to be some record and some tracking of that money.
When was, when was it given to employees? Because it was given by.
It was during the term, time Thompson was the city manager.
It wasn't from the ARPA money, because the ARPA money was not touched.
It was, it was from that money. That was the only expenditure that was being touched.
Not, not according to them, it was not. They did not touch the ARPA money. The money was there.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Just that, just as, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So the resolution deals with the approving the Attachment A. And so I guess the question for the manager would be whether this is supposed to be a substitution for the Attachment A that you have for the budget.
It's in, it's in addition to.
So does this amount encompass the, um, three million, the three-million-one-sixty-two-eight-ninety? Does, all of this encompass that? Because what you got to explain to them is how, if they pass this resolution, how this is merging with this? What, what, what's happening?
So the program things from, so from where we have on our spreadsheet that you have, where it has the minor home repair all the way down to small business development is with the attachment addresses for the programs.
There's still a question. What, what are you doing with the five-eighty-five, five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand the first year and five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand the second year, which total one-million-one-hundred-and-seventy dollars? Then you've got another revenue replacement, which in two years is going to add up to two-hundred-and-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Then you have the Marina, which it says first year and second year, but the first year, there's no amount. It's only a hundred-and-fifty-thousand on the second year for this Marina. For, it says first year D E F and second year A B C, comma, P, comma, et cetera. So you don't have nothing the first year, only the second year, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which I could tell you a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is not going to fix all those docks.
So the attachment that's coming is a correction to this spreadsheet. So it'll be here when staff gets through copying it and then also the crowd of the residents.
Okay, so, so, so here's my, my dilemma again. We have this, this agenda, so now, in the middle of the meeting, while we're going through it, we're going to make copies for an, uh, an amendment or a change that we have on the agenda. And this, this that you just gave us, you just gave it to us right at the beginning of the, of the meeting. So I didn't have time to look at it, I didn't have time to digest it. And I mean, you're talking about, you're going to give seventy-five-hundred dollars for home repairs to thirty-six households out of how many? Then you have, you're going to give ten thousand dollars per resident between seniors, veterans and disabled, and you're going to, only going to give sixteen people, six, sixteen residents. Okay? Uh, and that's per residence, per resident. Then on the first-time homeowners, it's not really thirty-three, I did the math, it's thirty-two and a half. How we come to the half? Uh, so where are these homes going to be bought? Uh, is it, is it going to be, have to be in the City of Pahokee? Or what's, what's, what's the stipulation on that?
This is not a workshop, you all, we're actually deliberating.
Well, that's the question I'll ask, is it going to be first come, first served? Or is it going to be a committee that's going to select, who's going to select? How are we going to do this?
So so one of the, the things I, I like us to consider is going to the nonprofits and let them distribute on our behalf and screen the applicants based on a lottery.
I, I'm not in favor of no nonprofit. I'm not in favor of no nonprofit to do this election and, and do it because I don't know who the nonprofit is going to be, so how do we know who the nonprofit is?
So we're negotiating with, um, with five nonprofits now to, to see what their fees are going to be so I can bring it back on February fourteenth meeting. Because there's still, um, six more resolutions to be done with the ARPA and addressing how it's going to go about.
Okay, um, I, I, I have issues. I got issues that, you know, this is just changed, is now in front of me. Um, I haven't looked at it, I haven't read it. Then another issue that I have, it's the verbiage that it says on here, um, which I have an issue with this because it says on implementation that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents and to take all actions necessary for the implementation of this resolution, including making any necessary subsequent approvals required to effectuate the intent of this resolution. The city manager is further authorized to implement the budget for expenditure of the ARPA funding in substantially the form attached Exhibit A. So I have a problem giving you a check for three-million dollars and telling you, "Here, Mr. Lucas, uh, do what you want with it." With this sub, sub categories that you have here. And you could change, you could, you could do, you could whatever, and I won't even know about it. I have a problem. I have a problem with that.
All expenditures would have to come before the commission in a resolution of who was dispersed what dollars.
It's not part of this resolution.
The programs themselves will have those additional, uh, comments in them and those, um, for example. All right, so... For example, the resolution, uh, at the next meeting would, would, would go something like this. The state of Florida, through the division, will, will make a disbursement of each non-entitled unit of governmental, uh, of local government's allocation. The two fiscal recovery funds allocations and receipts under the ARPA agreement is, and in this case, it would be our three million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. That was done in two transits. Uh, and then it would deal with, the funds will be utilized in several categories. One, reimbursement of COVID-related revenue shortfall. Two, reoccurring nonprofit partners. Three, households and small businesses and premium pay. Then it will go into the next we're asked, saying that we utilize for COVID-nineteen emergency, in this case, rental assistance, and then it'd be exhibit A, and then it'd be an amount not to exceed. And that, that is how we would do it. And then every time we would spend money, we would come back with the participants and the residents, and we're doing a, uh, a resolution for it.
That, that, uh, it says, uh, including making any necessary subsequent approvals required to effectuate the intent of this resolution. That says it right there, black and white. And any quarter law you go, that's what it says. Including making any necessary subsequent, subsequent. That's a key word. Approved, required to effectuate the intent of this resolution. I have a problem with that.
The, the key word though, the ten of the resolution, that mean it can't be changed or adopted or revised by the city manager on its own?
No, but you can make anything in there.
So the ten of the resolution would still be the same.
No, it's not.
But I do have a few questions, uh, on the, uh, home repairs. We, we're talking about giving seventy-five hundred per residence and seniors and veterans a ten thousand. I was hoping that, and, and I know ten thousand may not be a lot of money, but for the number of people we have in Pahokee, I think that figure, and it was my suggestion, I'm only one person, that that amount should have seen maybe five thousand, so we can reach a little more people than we would if we giving out ten thousand. And the second comment was the first time home buy. I certainly agree, that's a necessary, uh, thing to assist our residents with, but it's no real heavy demand for housing in Pahokee. Say, Vincent, if there was a housing development or two going up, and you knew people was applying and purchasing first time homes, I can see using that amount, but we'll, we'll set aside three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We may have four or five people. If that much would benefit from this in the next two years, maybe ten at the most. I, I doubt it, but just maybe ten at that very, very high end. And then we need to have a plan. If we don't reach this amount, where would that money then be directed or what would be the backup plan for spending that, that amount?
So, we recently have had discussion with a developer that owns sixteen acres of land, uh, right by Citizen Village. So, uh, it's already platted in fifty-one units, plus there's condominiums to go right behind there. Uh, if, I'm flexible in whatever the commission says. I, I'm just saying, there is going to be new homes built.
You say sixteen acres? I don't know if fifty-plus home can go on sixteen acres, though.
It's already a done plaque.
With, with your drive.
Where's that at? And who's the developer?
With some plaque.
It, it, it has to have been while y'all were here, because it's been planted.
It's been planted. Where, what, where are you talking about? Where's the location and who's the developer?
I'll bring it forward so you can see.
Why, why, why can't you say who it is now?
It's next, it's to the, I guess if you had Citizen Village, it's just, just north of it.
Is the property owned by Citizen Village? All that land, uh, Town and Country owns?
The land that, where the land is owned by the county?
No, it's owned by a, a, a private company.
Town and Country.
Residents, this is not a town hall meeting. This is not a workshop. The only people that should be talking at this time is the city commission and staff.
Who, who owns that, that, that land?
Well, one of the owners is, uh, Soler, Mr. Soler.
Mr. Soler?
S O L E R.
Where, where's he from?
I'll bring it forward, and I'll ask them if they'll come and do a presentation.
Doesn't matter, man. My God.
So, so apparently all, all, all this has been, has been run by the city?
No, this is something that the city was in discussion with, and then COVID hit. So when COVID hit, it stagnated the economy, and they just set on the property.
So they've owned this property all along?
I'll bring it forward, and they can, they can answer those questions for you.
My question would be to the city attorney, since Commissioner Perez brought up something on, on the, uh, implementation of this. Is this language clear enough to state that the city manager just don't have a, when I call it, I'm use, use it for lack of a better word, a blanket check to change or do anything outside of what this resolution calls for?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, first of all, um, just full disclosure, I did not see this item before it went to you all. So let me just put that on the record. Um, this would not have been my language, and I do believe that where it says necess- any necessary subsequent approvals required to effectuate the intent of this resolution, I do believe that, um, Commissioner Perez is correct, um, in that this may give more, um, um, more discretion that you all may want to give, if it's the manager's intention to bring these items back on a case-by-case basis. I think we can make that narrower, um, during the course of this meeting, once you finish your, and I can give you some, you know, some verbiage for that. But one of the other things I'm trying to understand, as you all deliberate, is again, how, what part of this is supposed to be incorporated so that legally, if the state or feds ask for the, um, resolution that approved the amount, that it's clear? So that's, so once you all flesh it out, you know, what you're talking about, if you can also seek that information and whatever answers you're seeking right now.
It is not clear, because you're talking about, um, a total of one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred, uh, dollars? That's gonna go to general funds? And actually, uh, we don't know, to be used for what? And I have a problem with that.
What's going to general funds?
The one million, one hundred and seventy from the two years from PBSO?
That's going to the PBSO. That's not going to general fund.
It's already in the budget. So we normally make the payment from the budget.
I agree with what you're saying, but this amount from ARPA is actually going, it may free up that amount.
Exactly.
But you can't make the statement that it's going to the general fund. It's going for this particular item.
You're gonna use this money to pay the sheriff?
Right.
And the money that you allocated in general fund for the sheriff is gonna be free?
Correct.
So I wanna know what that money's gonna do?
So that money underneath on there, where it says for Marina and campground, you have two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That's for repairing docks, D E F, and then A, B, and C along the pier. Then the other amount of, for the two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred is for infrastructure, for your streets, roads, potholes, storm drains, the covers, street signs, et cetera.
So the four hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars, what is that for?
That is to repair, uh, both the Marina and the, the streets of Pahokee.
Cause, cause, I mean, infrastructure, you got general funds, infrastructure, you got two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So you got another four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-five thousand for infrastructure.
Commissioner... Mr. Love, you're out of order, sir. Your part of making comments is at the beginning. It's dear if you would like to try to influence a commissioner or let them know you're in favor or you're not in favor of something, but once the meeting started, it's inappropriate now to try to feed commissioners with any information at this point.
So the four hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred, that's for the Marina and campground? For you to do dock, D E F, and A B C, pier, and et cetera? And then the infrastructure? Well, no, that's, that's only... Yeah, you got another infrastructure for four hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety-five. So it's almost, it's over two million dollars between, between, uh, the Marina and campground and infrastructure.
No. So when you have the two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred, and then in year two, you add, we're adding an additional hundred and eighty thousand, that total number is four hundred, seventy-two thousand, five hundred.
And that is for what?
Then, in year two, pardon?
And that is for what?
That is repairs, that is street. So you'll have almost three hundred thousand year one for both Marina and for infrastructure. And then the following year, we're adding more money, almost close to half a million dollars in each category, to address all I need. And it's still not gonna be enough.
What infrastructure are we talking about?
Resurfacing your roads, doing your curves, doing your, um, sidewalks, um, the drain covers, street signs.
So all that's gonna be bited out separately? Or it's gonna be bited out and given to two SBW? Since there happen to be the only bidder that bids in Pahokee for, you know, sidewalks and, and all that kind? Or maybe Russo might want another shot at it?
Or you can tell your husband to go and get his license.
But this has, this has got nothing to do with my husband. This has nothing to do with my husband. Cause that little sarcasm, when he, when, when he proposed to do it for free, that should not have been a sarcasm.
I don't wanna put you out. I don't have much of a choice if you continue to talk in the meeting, Mr. Love.
And another, another thing that I have is, um, using this A M D O and A and E. Those are the only two engineers that we've used for, for every, every, every grant that we have received that we haven't acted upon, but yet we've paid the engineer for it, and we're still working on the design. And we've been working on the designs for four years. And I have, I have all the documentation, and I'm gonna put it all together, and I'm gonna let everybody look at it, so they know that what I'm talking is, is, because I have proof.
Commissioners, we, we have a resolution before us. We haven't moved on it. We haven't made a motion or a second, and I'm not asking you or rushing you to do that, but we need to decide whether or not we need to table this again. We're talking about additional time, that's fine, and get the answer that we've been seeking or some more clarification. Allow the city attorney to work on the wording of this, uh, resolution in a way that it doesn't give the city manager a blanket check to change or make anything without it coming before us, and any major expenditures outside of this certainly won't be authorized unless it come before the city commission.
I would like to have, I would like to have the resolution at least till we can advance, and any attachments that are gonna be included, included on it. If you have each, each sign, I wanna know exactly what the money's gonna be used for. Line item, what you're gonna use the money? I know that we're paying PBSO with this money. I wanna know, the money that's gonna be freed in general fund, what are we gonna do with it? Cause we went from, 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 uh, payroll, uh... What was the wording on this thing? Payroll replacement due to COVID and, and all this stuff? Now we're, we're revenue replacement. We had the, uh, two hundred and five thousand, eight ninety for revenue replacement. I still don't know what, I didn't get an answer, what mitigation? What is, what is employee mitigation for the sixteen? Oh, you said that the money that, the thousand dollars that you gave out? So you, so we gave sixteen, sixteen employees a thousand dollars?
Grid gave out a thousand dollars to sixteen employees. Greg gave out a thousand dollars to sixteen employees.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna see, um... I wanna see the list of the people that got it.
Okay.
And also copies of the checks. I don't care who gave it, I wanna see it.
But you, I, I think it's appropriate for you to see that, and you voted on it, and I'm, I'm surprised you didn't act, ask any of those questions.
I don't remember voting on any expenditure from the ARPA money.
You don't remember asking any question during that time period either?
Cause I don't remember for it coming up. And I asked, I asked him about that, because it was mentioned by you guys, and I asked him. He said absolutely not, we did not touch a penny from the ARPA funds. That was his answer, so that is why I'm requesting, I wanna see the council checks or the checks that were written out, and the sixteen employees that got the thousand dollars. I wanna see it. It's not gonna be his word, or your word, or anybody's word, I wanna see it black and white.
If you did listen to what I said in the beginning, I think you made an appropriate point, you wanna see that. All I say that, when you had the opportunity and approved it, none of these questions you put forth with Thompson.
I do not remember that coming in front of us, because when we, when he brought it, we had only received half of the money, one point something. And right before he left, we got the other half, which it was, it was told to us that the entire amount was in the bank. Do you remember voting on anything, any thousand dollar for employees from the ARPA?
Looked like we're gonna table this. I just wanna make sure that we get whatever we need from the city manager, so when he bring this back, it's, 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 it's there that for us to approve. One thing you mentioned, we need to have at least five days, at least a week prior to
Yep.
voting on this again. The city attorney will make the appropriate language, so we're not giving a blanket check to anyone with authorization to do anything without this commission kinda approving it, unless it's so clear in this document that it won't be able to make much changes, if any. And if those changes does occur, before they can be done, it need to be approved by the city commission.
And I'd like to know when I could have that information about the money that, that was spent by the previous city manager, uh, Thompson, uh, from the ARPA funds.
I could get it to tell you within the next day or so.
The next day or so, today is Tuesday, by Thursday I could come by and pick it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
And anything given to one would also be given to all, so I just wanna make that clear, it's not just her request, it's a commission request.
Well, ma'am, I had, I already did a record request on that, on Thompson, I tried to put him email, I do have that report from Greg Thompson, he did give that to me.
Good, so she has it.
So, any commissioner got any other input that we can kinda be clear on the direction we giving him to have done prior to our next, uh, meeting?
I just like to see the amount, and exactly what we're using it for. And I'd like to know the money that's gonna be in the general funds, what we're gonna use it for. That million one seventy.
And Mayor Bab, um, for home repairs, I would like to see, um, this be for owner occupants. How did you see that on there?
What was it?
And again, just to further that, I think there was some conversation saying that it's not clear whether or not these resident would have to be within the city of Pahokee. So that just need to be clarified on this, uh, outline. Yeah, should be for the resident, Pahokee residents.
Within the city limits of Pahokee?
Right, this down payment system.
Well, it says, it says showing city of Pahokee address. And they have to have approval legal residence, residency.
No, we're talking about that, uh...
City limits, Abby.
That down payment assistance, uh, if you were purchasing a home, would that have to be done within the city limits of Pahokee? Just for clarification, it need to be in there.
And, and this is for, for people that the income is between eighty thousand to a hundred and forty, or what, what is this like?
So, the median average income, the range should be thirty percent of median income up to a hundred and forty percent.
So what is it?
On family size, um... Let's see here. I may not have a good example of that number.
Cause you, you tell it's to most residents, they don't know what you're talking about.
They show, you know how you did the HUD guideline, and you show for a family size of one through eight? Do you have that, so that Commissioner Perez can see?
That's table?
Yeah, so that's it, that's the word, the table.
And this is from the ARPA?
That's to, um, that's the universal one, that's used by the master.
Okay.
And then it's, um, people's household, county.
So, so, this is the number of people in the household, and this is? So you're talking about anybody that makes between eighteen thousand to, to a hundred and fifty-eight? Right. Okay.
Well, does anybody in the program?
Okay, can I get this? Or you don't have another one?
If, if there is no additional...
Make a copy for each one of us.
If there are no additional comments or input, do we need to provide the city manager, uh, entertain a motion? It seem like it's a consensus that we need to table this to our next, uh, commission meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table Resolution twenty twenty-three oh three to the next meeting, so that we could get the proper, uh, wording and the proper, um, attachments.
It has been moved by Commissioner Perez and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden, that we table this item, resolution, and to our next, uh, commission meeting, so we get all the documentation and information we need to move forward. Call for questions. Here and now, even ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
No, it was Bowden.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, the motion passed, bye, now let's vote. Now we'll move to our next item, which is the new business, this is a conversation about activities and events, upcoming events, if needed. First item on new business is the introduction, discussion, and direction of the city manager performance evaluation form and timeline.
So, Mr. Carlos will come up and do the presentation to the commissioners.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city residents. Today I wanted to go over a little bit about the city manager performance review, um, that was requested. I'm trying to explain a little bit, but what, what's a performance review? What's a performance review? A performance review is a formal assessment in which a manager evaluates an employee, employee's work performance, identifies strengths and weaknesses, offers feedback, and sets goals for the future. Performance reviews are also called performance appraisals or performance evaluations. Next. What do we do with the, with, why do we do these and how should we, we, uh, perform them? Performance review should be a two-way conversation, okay? It's not just a one-way thing, it's, let's talk to the employee, let's go over his performance and what our goals for him are for the following year. They should be focused for the future. We should be focused for the future, okay? They should be transparent, talk to them, review it with them. There should be objectives. Performance reviews impact employee successes. Reflect on the past, but focus on the future, okay? They should be fair and equitable. Next. If you look, it, it's a little bit hard to, to see.
Did you provide us a copy of that, though, so we can have a reference? I know, but I'm just saying.
Uh, you will be, be receiving them tomorrow.
No, I'm talking about when he's, that way now.
These, these are the city of Pahokee, this is the city of Pahokee's performance review, okay? We were able to find it and we put it together, and this is what the, that, you will receive, all seven pages tomorrow, okay? So, it, it's, you know, there's an, there's an instructions page, there's a certification page, and then there's the questions. So you go through the questions and you, and you mark answers for. The last page will give you an area where you can comment, and make comments, and make suggestions, okay?
We get the hell over here? Do we get the hell over?
It's, these are, these... This is for the commission, not for, not for the, uh... This was a, this was a request that was done by the commission, and, and they asked me to come forward with a value, a performance and evaluation, and this is what I put together for you. You will receive an elect, a PDF form tomorrow by email, and you can print, fill it out, okay? Any questions, please feel free to contact me, we'll get, go over them, I can explain them, or any suggestions that you may have. And then, the commissioners, please make sure they're back to me by February twenty-eighth, okay? So you have a little bit over a month. You're gonna get them on the twenty-fifth, and you, and I, I would expect them back by the twenty-eighth of February. Any questions?
For the manager? For us to evaluate the city manager?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I just have a question, I wanna know what's the status of the finance director, and the HR director, and the grant writer, and...
That's a question directed to the city manager.
And can we please get, can we please get emails of all the applicants? The applicants right along with their, um, with their, um... What do you call it? Resume, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now we move to the, uh, mayor's report. I know earlier it was mentioned that by, by one, at least one individual, maybe more, uh, that we don't listen to our residents. I can assure you, we do listen every day to resident, whether directly or indirectly, whether it's Facebook, whether it's by call, whether it's by email, but we listen, and we do realize that the public, our residents, elected us, and we should be representing you, and we try to, so I just wanna clear that out. Also, another thing was said that we haven't did anything, not so much this group, but over the last year or so, or two years, or how many other years you wanna call it, we haven't did much. So, I just jotted down just a few things that I wanna share that this commission, or a part of it anyway, had completed or, or did. And the first thing is, we actually had two new housing development that we approved. One was for a six-to-one unit, currently gonna be built on Barfield Highway, the old hospital site, that's gonna be a townhouse unit. We also received funding for Barfield Highway, a four-point-three-million-dollar project, total reconstruction with sidewalks, new roads, everything that would make this community a great community to live in, and increase our infrastructure value. The second housing development was for a little over a hundred units. It was apartments that was gonna be located at East Lake Old Site, the old East Lake High School. That deal failed through the development, developers decided that they were gonna put it, uh, profit on the market. I've asked our staff, our city staff, to see if they could re-knock on some doors and see if that developer would come back to the table to build those houses as planned, or find some means of making sure that that can happen in the very, uh, near future. We renovated our gymnasium after sitting out and vacant for over twelve years with the assistance of Palm Beach County, which provided about two million dollars. And, and I know if it was our money, someone would probably be saying, but I don't see, uh, where two million dollars went in the gym. Would it took two million dollars to renovate that gym? Not only that, it needed additional money to get it to where it need to be, and hopefully we'll be able to find some, uh, resources to do that. One would be the bleachers, we don't have real bleachers in our gym. Down to the bottom, we wanna build a, uh, a, a place where we could meet during hurricane and discuss how we gonna better, uh, safeguard our community and our residents, and, and have a, some type of additional facility on the bottom floor of that gym. Uh, we, we repaired about sixty percent of our roads, and most of you all may not know that, but in the last five years, if you count the number of roads that the city of Pohke had, sixty percent of them was either repaved or totally redone. East Main Street is one of them, the road directly crossed from the Pohke Elementary School, that was one-point-three million dollars. Now, ain't nobody just come out and say, you know what, we're gonna just dump this funding into the city of Pohke hand? We had to go out and really work and get that passed through legislative requests to receive that, the kinda money. And then you add up that one-point-five million at the East Main Street, and the four-point-three million at Barfield, that's nearly six million dollars, just with two roads. So it's very expensive, and I think some kinda way, we kinda got a little behind in our road project, but we are still working on making sure we improve our roads and put them in a better position that they're in. In East Lake Village, we're doing this stormwater drainage out there, that's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. We did the, uh, sidewalks and the streets out in Citizen Glade, Citizen Village, that was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That area hadn't been repaved in some years, we're talking like twenty, twenty-five years, probably longer than that development been out there. Roads haven't been repaved until just recently, last few years. We did a new football field, I realize it was certain types of dollars, but it was for our youth. That field was in bad physical condition, now we have a place for our youth to, uh, play. We did approximately two-hundred-and-two million dollars improvement at the Marina. We got the sub-lease of the restaurant approved by the state, and we had opposition on that. So we had to really fight for that. We had to even go to Tallahassee once or twice to be there to make sure that that marina project, that restaurant wasn't derailed. We participated in an out-of-state business conference to try to attract businesses in Pahokee. We weren't successful, but we spoke with at least 80, 80 businesses. It's no knock, it's no knock on the door that you're gonna be a success in the first time. Colonel Sanger, KLC. He was Iced, 3,000. I'm not even looking at you, Mr. Love, but you- We're currently seeking proposal for a new name-brand hotel here in Pahokee. We successfully overcame the pandemic the last two years. The city had to help provide some leadership and some guidance, encouraging mask wearing, encouraging shots, writing the governor to make sure that we had the vaccine in our own community. We dealt with the blue-green algae at the marina. One of the worst outbreaks that I've ever seen here in Pahokee. We had a lot of conversation about it with sewers and other stuff, which it wasn't. But we addressed that. We did press con- This is the mayor's report. And we dealt in the last year with a government injustice rate. And a lot of y'all, at least some of y'all, want that type of government back. You're out of, you're out of ordinance, Love. This is not, this is not a debate. This is not a discussion. This is a mayor's report. And I know you don't want the world to see you continuing to disrupt the meeting.
Yes, I do.
We're gonna ask Mr. Love to leave. I think he actually wants that to happen, so he can get some press feed. No, I'm not talking to, I'm, I'm giving the mayor the-
Everybody in here see that? Do y'all see him talking straight at me? Why everybody gonna say you talk, you looking at me and then tell me I ain't looking at you?
I'm looking at the ordinance, I'm just looking out there. And you said red in front, red in the middle, it's just mayor's scene like I'm looking at you. Okay. So there's some things that have been done here in the last few years. I think I'm proud of some of the things have been done and I hope this community is proud. But we need everybody working together to help make this city a better place, not only just five commissioners, but every single person here. And I don't wanna go back to the dark place that we went and we were in the last year. I don't think most of y'all want that to happen. The world don't even want it to happen, so I'm hoping- So that concludes the mayor's report. And now the next, uh, have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief. So we have a lot of legislative conferences coming up. Also, just a reminder, reminder that Palm Beach County League of Cities Luncheon is tomorrow. I first, I made reservations for everyone at noon. Uh, it'll be at the Palm Beach State College at 15845 Southern Boulevard in, uh, Lackahatchee Groves.
Did you follow up with the CFC and the commission would attend the, uh, the, the after program as far as funding for small cities?
So afterwards, they have a, um...
I am attending.
A grant proposal, so-
You did reservation, 'cause I say it wasn't in a walk-in, I'm not making you up, okay?
I asked the ladies to make sure that all that made the, all our reservations, that we wanted to stay afterwards, so they did that, so... Then, um, we have the Florida League of Cities Fast Fly-In to DC. I know there's a, a National League, uh, Conference, uh, I mean, uh, National League of Cities Congressional as well, that they didn't use the word "fly-in", but I just wanted to make sure I got the people who wanna go, so... Mr. Gonzalez, you, you going to? Okay. Ms. Perez?
It's always mine.
It's two, it's two events now. One is a legislative conference in Washington. Right, just wanna make sure that, and who all going to the fly-in?
So the fly-in would be, um, Vice Mayor Bowden, Gonzalez, and Perez. Then there's the Palm Beach County Legislative Days in Tallahassee, March 7th through the 8th. I've been working with the other cities. They want to know if we could use our 30-passenger van and I wanted to get a head count of who would like to write up, uh, to that on the commission and would there be a significant other?
I plan to go, but I'll drive myself.
Okay. You driving yourself? You driving yourself too, Mayor? Uh, so would it be you and, uh, ano-? Okay. By yourself or plus one?
All right.
Vice Mayor?
I'm riding the bus.
Uh, bu-? No significant, okay. All right, now, how many would like to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in DC, March 26th through the 28th?
I'm going.
I'm already registered. I'll have to get back with you on that. Okay. All right, just real quick, just going down, uh, everything, you, pretty much everything was the same from the last report.
There's one in Orlando, too. And Lake Buena Vista.
Uh, I didn't put that one on there. When, when is that one?
Sometime in, I believe it's in March.
It's a committee meeting.
Oh, in Cassemi?
Yeah, it's a committee, it's a committee.
Is that February or is that, uh?
I don't remember, but I think it's in March or May.
Okay, so, Cassemi. All right, we will look into that for you, Mayor.
It's the League of Cities.
All right, and... Our next meeting will be, commission meeting is Tuesday, February 14th, 6:00 PM. Uh, that concludes my report, sir.
Okay, I just wanna mention too that with the assistance of Palm Beach County Sheriff Department assisting, uh, Justice Santa Maria and the, my brothers and my sisters Keeper's Foundation is actually providing a generous donation to needed families of the Glades and we're in the process of providing names. I've gathered two, actually did a, a post, but I wanted the community to have some input as far as identifying someone or some family who they feel is, is in need, albeit turkey or ham and all the trimmings and a gift card from Walmart. So if you know of anyone who are in need, please pass it on to any of these commissioners and we will make sure that that name is placed for consideration with Palm Beach County Sheriff and its foundation.
Yeah, you text me that, but I was saying, "Why you texting something? He put me out the meeting." That's why I do text me that. And I say, "Well, why in the hell he text me?" And he done put me out the meeting.
I read you, you're out of order. Now we move to the, uh, city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, couple of things for you all. First, the Charter Review Committee has completed its work and so we'll have on your very next agenda, February 14th, I think it is, your, um, their recommendations for your consideration. The, um, the other thing, um, in terms of the legislative priorities, I mentioned to the manager, what cities do is they actually pass the legislative priorities prior to going to Washington or Tallahassee or whatever. So I've given the manager an example of a legislative priority. I've given him, I did a draft resolution for him to put forth to you all, for you to come up with what that list of legislative priorities is, so that you'll be on one accord in terms of what kind of items you're voting on and consistent with what other cities do. So, um, so he has that and if he, um, you know, brings it forward to the next commission meeting, he can be working on that or talking with you all in between. The other thing, um, just as a follow-up from the last commission meeting, Commissioner Gonzalez asked about a list of the litigation cases, which I provided, the list of everything that is existing and, um, and the descriptions of those and that went out to everybody a, a few days ago. So, uh, just, those are, those are my items, thank you.
I have a question on the quiet title. Can you explain what, um, 'cause I know, um, you know, the, I didn't see that the City of Pahokee was part of the litigation, so I wanna know, and I, and I want an explanation of what, um...
Is that the, is that the one that, um, um, when the last city, the last city attorney-
Capital Group LLC versus Freddie J. Harold.
Okay, let me pull it up.
Why you pulling that up? I'm gonna ask a question. February the 14th is Valentine Day. I might can't make that be-
It's no, it's no communication between- If you wanna badge it on him, Mr. Love, and wanna be put out, I'll oblige you though. We're still in our commission meeting, I'll put it that way. Thank you.
Okay, well, generally, what, what that is, is, I'm not sure if that's the one that I wrote about where, um, it, there was no response when your last attorney was here. And if that's the same one, what it is, is it's not necessarily going to be an action against the city, but it gives the city a time period for which to file an answer. And once the answer is filed, you secure your right to, um, the lien that, um, would have been the city's right to pursue. But if you don't file an answer to it, then you have no way, once the quiet, once the title is quieted and you have, and you can, you know, then the, the land is clear, you have no way to go and get the money that might be due to the city. So if that's the particular case, because I, I'm trying to find it on my computer, but if that is the particular case you're talking about, that's what it is. That's just like, um, in foreclosure cases, the same thing happens. We file an answer in the cases that we get and then we're able to, um, go back and get money for the city. That's how you've gotten checks in the past where the city, because we file an answer. So if that's not done, then you don't have any right to go back and, you know, get the money. So that's what it means. That's why you don't find some, in most cases, you'll see the city listed. As, uh, in other cases, like that case in particular, for what you should have the, um, the complaint for, you'll see the City of Pahokee should be listed as well.
So this means one, one, the, the one entity is suing the other one and they're trying to get a clear title and you're making sure that the lien that the city has gets paid?
Gets protect-
Is that what that means?
Gets protected. So if the lien, if, if it's a code enforcement lien, for instance, and the city has already done the necessary paperwork, which is why, um, generally speaking, they wouldn't even know that you have a claim, then once the, um, the title, once the action is quieted, then the city can then go in and make the claim for whatever outstanding debts are owed to the city.
And who, who was the attorney at the time?
The attorney at the time was Mr. Brandonberg. That's what's in the paper that I sent you. So you see, you should see that in the, um-
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have, it doesn't have when, when this was filed, 'cause-
Yeah.
I mean, I saw the date of, um, May 15, 20, and Brandonberg passed on May, on February the 4th, and we had till February 16th to file an answer.
So I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't here then, so whoever was here at that time would have been the attorney. If it wasn't Mr. Brandonberg, then it was whoever, it was his office. So, you know, I can't answer that because I don't know, but I can tell you, I wasn't here, so-
It was actually filed November 29th, 2021.
So I wasn't here at that time.
That was Mr. Brandonberg.
Question to the city attorney, uh, and before I make this comment, I wanna just thank our Charter Review Committee, having solved their final, uh, request, what they were gonna be proposing to make amendment to, but it'd have to be approved by the city commission. But my question is, as a whole, since we are 100 years old and that charter hasn't been changed very much over the 100 years, are we able as a commission, request something to be added? Of course, it'd have to be at least majority, but could that be done?
Yes, sir, you are.
And what, what would be the timing of that? Have to be committee report or do we have a, uh?
Well, typically, it would be something that you would bring up to be put on the agenda for the next agenda.
Okay.
So you all would have a discussion about it, perhaps during, you know, during that discussion, the manager could even put on a, um, a separate item for a commission discussion on, on Charter Review amendments in general. Um, and then you all could have a discussion, um, and, you know, make recommendations. And if you have a majority vote, then it goes as a referendum to the voters.
Okay.
I, I have the other one, that 534 notes with LLC versus Tarpon 4 LLC. I couldn't even find that Tarpon 4 LLC anywhere in the-
Was that the old case, um, that said, what does the description say?
Um, it's on a quiet title and it says that it was filed on April 16th of 2019.
Yes, that's the one where nothing has happened since 2019. So you should see the description there with it. So I have no other, it's just an open case, but there is no, there has been nothing, no action. It's just probably something that just hasn't been closed or caught, but there's been nothing, um, that's taken place on it since then.
Who was the attorney then?
The city's just named on it. It's, it was 1993, so it's-
Oh, 1993.
Yeah, it's something very old.
And my last question, go back to the city manager, uh, just a previous, uh, comment or question we had, at least I had, or someone else had. The financial report, why are they not being done on a, a monthly basis or at a minimum or quarterly? And when we have requested that, it's, I'm just trying to get the rationale or reason behind it not being done.
Well, I just requested, uh, some financials last week. I'll bring them forward at the next meeting.
We're supposed to have them quarterly.
No, we need to have them monthly, but-
Yeah, I know, but at least they were doing the quarter.
Now we'll move to the, uh, city commission comments and we'll start with Commissioner Bowden.
Well, um, thank you all for coming today. You know, we're gonna continue to work hard to move the city forward. If you'd like me to answer a quick question about the splash pad, I'd be more than happy to do so. Would you like me to do so? Okay, so now, um, this is what I want us to take into consideration, all right? Number one, we, we do have a housing crisis. Number, number two-
I'm not a third.
No, 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 I, I, I'm gonna try to explain it, okay? Because I think, I, I would love for us to have a splash pad. I would love for us to use these open funds to have a splash pad. But I wanna put this out there so that we kinda understand everything and we can prioritize, okay? So Florida is the, actually the fastest-growing state in the United States. So Florida is the, actually the fastest growing state in the United States right now. Palm Beach County Metropolitan Area is actually number two in inflation. A lot of people are experiencing rent increases ranging from fifty all the way up to seven hundred dollars. Florida has no laws to regulate what a landlord can charge somebody for rent. So, that being said, in terms of prioritizing, we've already heard people complain about their rent, their rent increases and it's gonna continue to happen. Though I would love to, love for us to use this, use this open money for a splash pad, if people are evicted from their homes, ain't no kids getting wet. I'm just keeping it real. No, I'm serious.
My, our kids need somewhere, our kids need somewhere.
If, if our residents are being evicted from their homes because they cannot afford to pay their rents, then that puts us in another situation. Though I would love for us to have a splash pad and I, I do believe that one day we will. Right now, we're in a crisis all over this country and our state is number, is the fastest growing state and our, our area is the number two area for inflation. So a lot of people are experiencing a lot of trouble right now with rent increases that are not regulated. So maybe that's not, that answer does not suffice, but I really do think that that's something that we need to take into consideration. We want to help those citizens here who are renting. We want to help them because they've come to us with some of their issues. Rent increases that they cannot control and our state can, our state does not control that. So, like I said, that answer may not suffice. But I think that's something that we need to.
In the summer when our kids have no.
I think that's something that we need to think about.
We done went through three summers with no splash pad. Like I said, when they came in with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build it, they said we got two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know what y'all thought. Y'all was a little tripping, I guess. Because when they said we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build it, Mr. Love, because I would raise a hell by the pool, they said we can't build no pool, we'll build a splash pad. Keith Yu was setting up there. And when Matt Zalata gave them their money, they say, huh, here go a big old check. And y'all definitely, only stipulation is y'all got your name after Mr. Love. And Mr. Love jumped up and say, I don't need nothing after me, that's it, like I set up for him. I don't need no attention. I got way more attention than any of y'all. When I been got it, when I used to sell drugs, it was like, that's when I got my attention.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I'm just asking.
Yes, sir.
Community Action Palm Beach County had seven million dollars that they was giving out to help people with rent, housing, homes. So while the city of Pahokee trying to duplicate the same thing that the county do every day.
Somebody text me this. Somebody text me the same thing.
Okay, so my question to you, my question to you would be, how many of our citizens actually took advantage?
All of them.
All of them took advantage?
All of them, yeah, I know.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is?
They know, trust me, they know.
So, so what you, you telling me that somebody actually took advantage of them?
Just Palm Beach County, just Palm Beach County, lift on community action and, and their actual housing and apply. You apply on the internet, you don't have to go to the site, you can do it on the internet.
Yes, sir.
And they'll, and they'll do it.
And that's their one. They was about why they can't get a splash pad or call somebody to serve them for their rent.
Okay.
Now my kids ain't got nowhere, they got to go tour with the gators. They got to go tour with them damn gators over there.
I'm a zigzagging.
I'll take them away to Palm Beach.
Commissioner Perez.
They had three hundred thousand on there, they started paying with thirty thousand and then they said, oh, we gotta get some more. The boule went over there, sat in the corner and come back and say, oh, we got three hundred thousand. I don't know how that happened, but she come back and say, oh, we got three hundred thousand. She, she come and said, we got three hundred thousand. Wasn't it three hundred thousand for the pool? And then we went to raise the sand, I was sitting right by that man right there. We said, well, we got three hundred thousand for a splash pad, why we can't get a pool? Y'all started paying, told that lie about, oh, we gonna see what kind of pool. Is it a general pool, is it this kind? You ain't asking about no pool. I bet you ain't checked on no pool, you didn't check on nothing. But y'all started paying, pushing us off of these lives, man, that's what got me.
Commissioner Perez.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank everyone. My family and I want to thank everybody for your love, your support. As y'all know, I lost my son. Today of the last meeting. That's my second son that I buried within the eighteen month period. But I'm here, I thank God, because to him is the glory. He's given me the peace of mind so that I could go on. And because I believe in this community. I've been advocating for this community ever since I started here. And my goal has always been not for us as adults, because we are responsible for what we do, but because of the next generation. Because anybody that knows me, knows that my heart has always been the youth in this community, which a lot of them are adults now. But I still consider them my kids, my family. I always treated them like it. For that reason, I'd like to tell you guys, the same way that you elected us, you could remove us, okay? You don't have to put up, you don't have to put up with the lies. You don't have to put up with, 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 with the excuses.
Amen.
Hold us accountable. Hold us accountable. You elected us for a reason. We are part of the community. We're not here any better or any higher or anything than any of you. We are part of the community. We are responsible, we have a responsibility to the next generation. Because if we don't do it, we are failing them. And we have done this for a long time. So I say to you, it's time to complain, it's time to talk about it. I mean, we're all family, we know each other. And the same way that we know each other, we need to hold each other accountable, accountable, okay? So the one thing that I'm gonna speak about, I would like to ask the city manager, since we're gonna have a million, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the general fund, because it's gonna free it up, I want consideration for that splash pad. That's only three hundred thousand dollars and we could pull that and we could do a whole new one, okay? A whole new one. Because as I, as I understand, we had, I think it was close to a million dollars for that park. And, and what we did was a, a, I guess a half-but splash pad, because for what I understand, it only worked for, for a while. And it's been out of commission for years and years and years. I don't know what the problem is, I don't know, you know, what the big deal was about the park, who dropped the ball, but it's in the past, but I like to see it because the kids do need some type of recreation. They don't have anything to do during the summer. Also, on, on, on the money that we're gonna do, I would like to see some type of, of program for the youth, some part-time or something where they could, seniors get out of school early, summer programs where they could make a little bit of money. Uh, you know, something so that they could be engaged. You know, I like, I like to see that going. As far as, 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 as far as East Lake, we had that, that, that grant, that's been since two thousand seventeen. So, you know, to talk about it in twenty twenty-three, that's, that's, that's not even, I wouldn't even call that an accomplishment. Barfield Highway, pretty much the same thing. I think it was two thousand nineteen, seventeen, nineteen. I have all the days written down. You know, the gym, uh, thank God, at least we have the basketball. But we've been trying to do that gym for about fifteen years. We've been, money has been pouring in, but it hasn't been, it has been received, but it hasn't been poured in. I, I mean, all we have, it's, it's, it's a gym with a bathroom. Everything on the bottom was demolished and it's been left like that. The one, the one person that we had, that, that boy has given and given and given to this community without asking not even for recognition, he was ran off because of the ex-city manager and, and the verbiage and the lies that was told of him. And that, that, that was, that was, that was uncalled for, very uncalled for.
You on, you on live stream, so make sure you give accurate facts. When, when, when Anquan decided it was a mutual agreement as far as a separation of that gym, a lot of times, you can be in NFL, it takes money for your foundation to help raise the funds. I don't know what happened, but I personally reached out to him. Well, I was suspicious and I say, Anquan, did any coercion, coercion was occurred to you? I mean, any, anything that was out of order, saying that you need to step back and we can take over and do it? He said, no, it was a mutual decision between me and the city that the city had found a way that the county would assist in that, that I don't need to continue with it. So I, I personally called him.
Yes, that, and that, and, and, and that's the way he works, that's the way he works. The reason being was, okay, because, because he was, he was attacked. I was here, I was here when, when the city manager and also Commissioner Hill, they all talked about him and that all he wanted was his name on the thing. And the city manager said that he was lying, that he said that, that they found hoes and that he talked to the found hoes. All that is in, is, is, so you know what? Being the man that he is, he departed and he departed in those ways. This is why we no longer have the Q Fest. And what he brings to, to the city, he does on his own. This is the reason why. But leaving that, that aside, I mean, you speak about sixty percent of the Pahokee roads. I like to get a list of all sixty percents because if.
Have a list of them, I'll be happy to share that with you.
Yes, I would like to see it. I would like to see it because if what is left is forty percent, then, then, I mean, I don't know what, what part, so I would, I would love, I would love to do that.
So you, you, you're doing a.
I'm doing a recap. I'm doing a recap of, of the accomplishments from the city.
Okay, okay.
And also I like to speak about the football field, which the city manager committed eight hundred thousand dollars for that football field when the football field was gonna be built by the Orange Bowl free of charge and it was gonna be maintained by the county. But because of his arrogance, it didn't work out and he went and he committed eight hundred thousand dollars from, from, from the community surtax, which we could have used for other things.
All right, we got one, we got one commission.
Okay, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, you're wrong.
She wrong with a lot of stuff she's out there doing.
No, if I'm wrong? Okay.
You chose Beverly, put the building Beverly.
It has to be a county park.
All right, but it had to be somebody that can maintain the school and the county own that field out, uh, to the parking building, the city. Now what the county did, he won one of those fields, so he took the surtax money and got it loaned from the bank somewhere and put one out there.
Okay.
And he didn't do it on his own either, you know, he had to be approved by the commission, right?
Okay, I stand corrected, I stand corrected. Thank you for, for, because, because you were part of it and you're giving me the right information.
The gym can be rented, it should be.
Because when I ask a question, you can bet, I just about know what the answer gonna be. If I know, if I ask you what two plus two is, I know it gonna be four.
One of the, one of the requirement of that gym when the county assisted in paying for the renovation was to allow the community to use it.
Bring them up in here lined up and they'll tell you how that man done told a lie to them. And when it all be said and done, oh, we can't rent it because we were gonna be doing this in December, January and February and all this other kind of stuff. When it's the citizens of Pahokee had to go to Wellington to rent somewhere.
All right, let, let, let Commissioner finish her report so we can move on. This is a report, I thought it was comments, but evidently the mirror's not only one half reports.
Well, I mean, comments and comments, I could make whatever comments I wanted, those were my comments. I'm, I'm, I'm always out of, out of order when I try to speak any other time. So I figure I'll go ahead and speak when I have the time. So, thank you.
Now we'll move to Commissioner Perez.
Well, first of all, thank you everybody for coming. I have a couple of questions on the East Lake property. I have a couple of questions in reference to the East Lake property. You know how we had to change to rezoning? Because they were gonna bring a, they're gonna bring affordable housing. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Speaking in reference to the East Lake property, where Old East Lake used to be at, remember, they fought hard for us to change the zoning for them to bring housing, affordable housing to the community. Once we changed the zoning on there, within weeks, they put it on face upon, RE/MAX for sale. They never had intentions on helping out the community to put affordable housing. And I asked more than twice to the community and the city manager and the attorney to see what we can do to reverse that zoning because they took advantage of us to buy that part, to flip the, the zoning on us so they could profit off of it. They never had intentions to help us out. They didn't have no intention to building houses for the community. It was all about greed. And I would ask the commission and their attorney and the city manager to please figure out how they can reverse that zoning because that's like a laugh in our face. And we shouldn't have to tolerate that, we have to be more defensive on how we choose to change zonings, specifically with people who aren't from our area. They come here, they take advantage of us, that's one thing. And we also have a reputation that we're getting money for one project, but yet we ended up spending it, we end up spending it somewhere else and never finishing the project or even getting it started. So we need to tighten up on that. So I don't know where the money went out for Bar, for McClure Road, for the splash pad. I'm not even gonna go there because only the previous, which is the previous commission was here, I wasn't here. So that's something that should be, that's very alarming. And the next question is about the house on Barfield Highway, I mean, Bacon Point Road when it was demolished. Did they turn in their bond? Was there a bond set? City manager?
Yeah, so at six forty-seven Bacon Point Road, they're in the process of completing that and they have, at the time of the bid, did submit all their performance bonds and things that were required.
So they did turn in the bond?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a document on that, please?
Sure.
And that'll be it.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Murray.
I want to thank our citizens for coming to our commission meeting. But I would just ask that if we could please put out accurate information to our community. And if you don't, don't just go by words. Get accurate information, even from our commissioners.
Amen to that, amen to that.
Commissioner Perez.
Just saying amen.
Because even some of the information that was just put out was inaccurate information.
I think you do correctly.
For, one, let me go to, and I'm glad I just had this, just happened to have this in my folder here for, Commissioner Gonzalez was talking about the East Lake Village Apartments. They didn't come and strong-armed rob us to change a code, a zoning. They paid almost four thousand dollars, the fee that had to be paid through for zoning. They went through all of the paperwork. As a matter of fact, you can even get a copy of this if you would like. Everything that, that's supposed to have went, went, came through the ZAP board, went through engineering, went through, even they came to the commission. They came to the commission. they came to the commission meeting, showed the, what they would like to build, propose to build out there. And so the thing, it wasn't a couple of weeks after, but because of the name that they were gonna name the project, it was denied from the commission. It was a hundred and forty-seven units that they were building out there.
Excuse me, it passed.
I did not, I did not.
They was denied, it passed.
I did not, I did not. It wasn't the project, it was a road, actually, it was not the facility.
Yeah, they were gonna lay the road out the channel, he ain't pumping it.
It doesn't, just to clear.
It wasn't a road, it was a project, it was a channel.
Mr. Love and Commissioner Perez, you ought to order, allow the Vice Mayor to finish her comments.
Jesse, if this is a private property, all of them, you cannot make this man come here now, whether you zone it back to commercial, zone it to residential, he can still let it just sit right there. You have property up on Rodden Avenue, all of those empty parts, who is privately owned land. Privately owned. We can't make Mrs. Hill or anyone else put anything on those. She can let it sit there till the day she die if she wanted to. We cannot make them do that. Now, we have, he talking about saying that we should make him zone it back, you can't do that. You can't do that. He paid his fees to do-
Isn't that a question for our attorney?
He paid his fees to do, to come through a zone. He went through the process, the correct process. So if he wanted to sit there, he can let it sit. He can let it, he can let it sit there. It's not just that, but we have a lot of property in there. There are a lot of us own property in the community. I see a lot of land empty that's owned by private citizens in the community that's not doing anything with it. He want to go back to the zoning thing. If you want to go back, we have, and please don't put me out, we have the Prince Theater, if you want to just say this, I'm just using for an example. I'm just using for an example of the zoning, because they were talking about the zoning. I don't care who owned it, I'm just, that's what I know for zoning. That's not what I said.
Why don't you use that one?
Commissioner Perez.
I'm just saying, they made a deal, they made a deal that if they get the property, they would turn it to something else if they was to do this and do that. It never happened. It still sits there right now vacant. All I'm saying, there is probably, so maybe we should, as a commission, let's try to have a table set, to bring our citizens who own land and see if there's something that we can help them do to assist in putting stuff on their land, whether it be housing. Whether it be housing or whatever, because there is a lot of land that we don't own.
Y'all need to get people in Carver Trailer Park.
That we don't-
'Cause that looks like a dump. If y'all send me Carver Trailer Park, it's good.
You gonna continue to talk at, Mr. Love?
Y'all need to get the owners in here for the next week.
Well, Mr. Love, you want to know something on Carver? I talked to those owners at Carver Trailer Park. They don't want to do anything out there.
They comfortable, you tell me.
They don't want to do anything out there.
Yes, they comfortable.
Well, if you, I talked, I actually let a young lady right here, I talked with those people. But the thing about it, Mayor, just, community, let's work together. We come to these commission meetings raising-
This ain't my first rodeo. When you didn't even know nothing about the commission, when I was at the commission meeting.
Uh, go ahead, close the door.
When you were running the streets, I was at the commission meeting. It's dirty. Come at me, don't y'all come at me.
The only persons should be talking now is the commissioners. Okay, we're gonna move on. Each commissioner had a chance and-
I want to say something really quick.
Comments, naysayers on their agenda, you out of order.
I want to ask the city, what have they done-
You out of order, you-
To work with the property owners? What have they done?
We're gonna move to the next future-
Has any program come to the city?
Future gen items. And I'm gonna start. I would like, if it's the blessing and the majority of this commission, that we add on our future gen item amendment to our rules of procedures to address or properly address disrupted behavior from the audience and not on the audience, our commission itself. And it even can be amended as such if the mayor, which is the chair, ruled someone is out of order and requested they be removed, that the commission as a whole can override it, say, "I don't see that action wanting someone being removed." And I'm specifically talking about commissioners also, because we got commissioners that disrupt this meeting and this procedure almost worse than the audience does. And it coming from us sometimes, so we got to be able to find a way to combat that.
He, commissioners can't put commissioners out of league to keep.
Now you're turning, I guess you're telling us how or what. This may be possible.
The thing is that, the thing is that you do it to your convenience. 'Cause when you had all your people here interrupting us when we had the majority, you didn't do anything about it. You had your brother, you had Sanqueta, you had everybody out here, everybody talking and carried off. Ms. Wallace used to conversate back and forth with all you guys, it never bothered you, but now it does.
You around in here, and you ain't gonna put him out.
I move that as a motion. If there's a second, there's a second, if not, we'll move it.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by the mayor to have our attorney draft up an amendment rules of procedure to include and to address disrupted citizen behavior as well as disruption from our commission if it occurred. Hopefully, it won't occur, but what's going on now, I'm gonna be honest, I just feel that we have at least one commissioner being just as disruptive as anyone I've ever encountered, unprofessional.
Palm Beach Speaker got bad for every vote, nobody, it ain't nobody else but bad for every vote. You seen Palm Beach Speaker?
You out of order, Mr. Love, you're not even-
Get out of here, just don't talk to police no damn long. I'm tired of them, they're saying a lie, you're talking yourself in like y'all too honest with. Y'all ain't doing nothing to you. When that man that go, you gonna be still saying that with egg on your face. I'm gonna lie tonight if y'all don't want to understand. I'm gonna lie, when I get out of here, come on, come on, baby. Be around him, be around him. I'm gonna lie tonight, so I'm gonna be talking about this, I'm saying this-
We have a motion and a second. Motion by the mayor, second by the vice mayor to have the rules of procedure amended. Call for questions? Hearing none, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Sure.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Motion passed by the Georgia through to vote.
You're not gonna throw me out. I don't care what you pass. You're not gonna throw me out, 'cause legally, you can't. So pass all your ordinances that you want, a resolution or whatever it is.
And I know you will, but if you could, just check with the ethnic board and see if that's legally able to do. I know we can set our own rules and procedures and if we decide as a committee or board, this is how we're gonna follow and conduct our business. It should be able to be done. Anyone else with anything for future gen items?
I'm making a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
This is been moved by Commissioner Perez and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for questions, hearing none, all in favor? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned.